Okay, so 6:01, we'll call to order. And Sarah, did you take attendance already? Yes?
I haven't called it.
Okay. Why don't we do that?
Okay, so present Bella Gorman, Christine Trident, Darren Rose, Dwayne Stanley, Evan Krasowski, Greg Theos, James Carter, and Maura Webster.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight?
I don't believe so.
For the first month, I didn't get any emails, so that's good.
All right. I never know whether that's a good sign or...
I say no news is good news.
There you go. Very true. Okay, so hearing no call for public comment, we will move on to... Actually, we have not... To 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 to... That's coming up. The quarterly financial statements are in the consent agenda. Bella?
Mara, you might want to mention that it's being recorded.
So for everybody who's watching, the meeting is being recorded. And have we figured out live streaming when we're on Teams? Yes, are we still doing that as well?
We have not yet. Set that up.
So, being recorded. All right, so now consent agenda, Bella.
And also, you might want to mention executive session at the end.
Okay, so we will be going into executive session, not returning to discuss the strategies regarding negotiations with represented personnel as doing so an open session would be detrimental to the process. So we will not, again, we will not be reconvening in open session afterward.
You need a timekeeper.
If anybody would like to volunteer, I think we're pretty concise this evening, but...
I can do it.
Awesome, thanks, Dwayne.
That was Dwayne?
Yeah.
Dwayne?
Anything else I'm forgetting?
Nope.
Excellent. Bella! Quarterly financial statements.
So we reviewed the quarterly financials at our finance committee meeting this past, this week on Tuesday. It's only three months, and so when we compare actuals to budget, you know, it's not very meaningful because, you know, we're only three months into the year. But it is nice to just kind of see the numbers. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, great.
Excellent. All right, first item up for a vote is approving the mini, meeting minutes from September 26, 2024. I have a couple of edits. Does anybody else have any edits before we vote? All right, the only changes I have, Sarah, it has you as present.
Okay.
And so we missed you greatly, so we knew you weren't present. And then, under the votes section, the first motion was made by Darren, and it was seconded by Bella. And then, we did vote to approve, but Dwayne abstained from that vote. And then, when we adjourned, Jim made the motion, and Dwayne seconded. Okay, my apologies for not getting those in sooner. So with those changes made, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Darren. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dwayne. That was Darren and Dwayne.
Right? Hey, I'll call.
Thank you.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
To everyone.
All right, thank you. All right, and the next thing on our agenda is the audited financial statements. Leanna, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, so I just want to clarify. When I added these statements to the agenda, I was under the impression that the board had to vote on it. But we were corrected at finance the other night. That finance committee just needs to vote on it, and this will just be an inform to all of you.
Excellent.
Share my screen, so I don't know if that messes up your agenda.
No, we'll just do it now.
Okay. All right, can you see my screen?
Yep.
All right, so I've had the pleasure of enduring the audit for the past few months. They audited our financial statements for June 30, 2024. And you'll also see a comparative of June 20, June 30, 2023. So I'm just going to scroll down. I'm just going to do a very top-level review. And then, if anybody has questions, we can delve into that further. So just a table of contents. And then, the first report that you'll see is the independent auditor's report. It was a clean report, which is, is very good. It's a solid report for the school. No audit findings. And then, I won't bore you with all of the verbiage. And then, next you'll see management discussion and analysis, and it just sort of summarizes the, the financial year for AMSA and compares it to last year. Some good bedtime reading. Okay, so first, we'll get to the balance sheet. In government accounting, you call it the statement of net position. And a couple things to highlight. So, we had total current assets of $17,517,000. And of that, you'll see three line items, about $12 million in cash. Out of that $12 million is $9 million that is for the construction project. So that's total current assets. And then, we have some long-term assets. $28 million for total assets of $46 million. Then we draw down to the liabilities. Current liabilities, we have $5,465. Of that, the, the big liabilities are the construction in progress, $2,750,000, and accrued expenses of $1,008,000. Then, of course, we have our long-term liabilities, which the majority of that is the mortgage to the bank, $23 million. And if you subtract the liabilities from the assets, you'll get a net position or net revenue, as I like to call it, $16,485,000. Any questions on the balance sheet? It's a, it's a very solid balance sheet. All right, if there's no questions, I'll scroll down to the, what I like to call the, the revenue, the profit and loss statement. In government terms, it's called the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. But it is very similar to corporate world of a profit and loss. And so, let's see if I can make this just a tad bigger. So for operating revenue, we have $20 million. $20 million. And then, operating expense, $14 million. And then, you see some direct student costs, $2 million. And then occupancy, that's, you know, the, the building and such, that's $1.6 million. And then, you got some other operating costs and then depreciation. So total operating expenses, $20 million. And then, you get some miscellaneous revenue, that's the rental income and things like that, the interest income. So, net operating income, or is it the surplus, is $1,077,000 for the year. And then, they just, they just add that into your net position, which we just saw on the balance sheet. Any questions on the profit and loss? Okay, I'll keep going. Then we have the statement of, this is just the prior year to compare. So you can see, last year, we had $1,220,000, and this is the net surplus compared to our $1,077,000. And then, this is the statement of cash flows. This just shows how your cash changed throughout the year. Want to look at the total enterprise fund. These statements also include our foundation, the STEM Soaring Eagles. And you can just see that we had operating cash flows in, operating cash flows out, leaving us with our ending our ending cash balance of $2 million. I'm sorry. Beginning of the year, end of the year, right here. So $12,432,000 is the, the cash balance at the end of June 30. Any questions on that one? Okay, let's just scroll down. Then you'll see some footnotes to the financial statements. This just highlights different areas of the financial status of, of AMSA for the fiscal year. I don't think there was any significant changes. Do want to point out there was some in-kind pension and transportation that we have every year. I just wanted to point out the invest, so this is the investments that we started this year. We invested in treasury bills. Little didn't get transferred as of the end of the year, so that's sitting in money market funds. It's been transferred since. There's a cash footnote. Again, bedtime reading, put you right out. Concentration of credit risk. I don't know if you all remember, but a couple of years ago, we had most of our money in uninsured accounts. And when the Silicon Valley Bank situation happened, we were not in a good position. But if you look at the footnote now, we are, for the majority, fully insured with our cash and invested in treasury bills. And this just summarizes how we're going to pay the bond for the next few years. And again, the auditor's report, clean report. And no find, no audit findings to report. And there, that's it. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. There are no questions. That's awesome, Leanna. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I can only imagine. It's not thoroughly enjoyable. But we appreciate it. Any, is there anything else that you want to call out about it, any sort of explanations, or it's all pretty much there and?
It's pretty much there. There's, there's another report that the auditors prepare that I think a lot of you like to look at. It's a comparison of AMSA to other charter schools. I did not prepare that report nor had much involvement in, so I'm not presenting that tonight. But if you want to take a look at it, it's, it's quite interesting to see how we compare to other charter schools.
Thank you. All right. If there are no questions, we will move on to updates. And Marcy, you're on, yes?
I am. I'm sorry, I was a little late. My kids had their last soccer game of the season tonight, so. Great, well, thank you. I just have a couple of quick updates because I suspect Evan will give an update about the actual development committee, so. So we have a couple new business partners, which is great. We have five business partners now. I met with our main volunteer lead, Mary Jo Naraki, last week, and then this other person that we've brought in to help us out with some things, and we have a couple of additional prospects that we're gonna go after in the next few weeks. The fun run is happening next week, next Wednesday. And it is going well so far. We have about just over $11,000 collected. The goal is $18,000 this year, up from 15 last year. We're pushing it really hard. But, you know, it, it might turn out that 18 was a little too high. I, I think it might come in more around 15 again, which is still an awesome revenue stream for us. The STEM Soaring Eagles Board, I think Leanna alluded to this, did meet. Not last week, I think, but the week before, elected new officers, so that's great. And Lisa started the conversation about the name change and the group, you know, is going with the name change, so that's good. We just have to get the paperwork filed to have that all be official. So Lisa, please jump in, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's going to be the Advanced Math and Science Academy STEM Soaring Eagles Foundation.
I think we're dropping STEM, so I think just Advanced Math and Science Academy Soaring Eagles.
What is it going to be, Lisa?
The Advanced Math and Science Academy Soaring Eagles Foundation.
And Sarah, I can send you notes if it's easier for you afterwards. I can type, I actually have this as an email draft, and I'll just finish it up and type it in.
Perfect, thank you.
And then the other thing, so it was a very brief meeting that we had two weeks ago just because we wanted to get the officers elected, so we talked about the name change of officers. And then, we also had a quick conversation about recruitment. We know we need to recruit more members to this group. Right now, there are five of them, and there's actually four officer positions, so that, you know, that's a little bit of a tough ratio there. So we have, we know we need to do that, and so it's on everybody's mind, so that will happen. I believe our next meeting is scheduled for December 9. And so we'll go into that with a couple potential leads that will come, you know, internally from Lisa Legana and I having some discussions, but also I, we expect some of the other board members to have some ideas too. Really great. The Bourbon Raffle is still going strong. We've sold 95 tickets. The drawing for that is also next week, so I think we'll officially close the sale on the 30th, and the drawing will be on the 31st. So as it stands now, again, a nice revenue stream for us. But, you know, it's about $5,000 profit if we stay exactly where we are now, but I do think we anticipate selling a few more. I've done a little bit of grant writing over the past couple of weeks. We applied for four Mass Cultural Council grants locally, so we applied to Marlboro, Hudson, Maynard, and Clinton. Those are really small money. They're usually between $350 and $750, which I know does not move our needle that much, but there's a lot of great publicity and marketing that goes around getting those, so it would be nice for those to be in, in our wheelhouse. And I did apply specifically for the civics project for that, the eighth-grade civics requirements that we, AMSA now adheres to. And there was a field trip specifically for that, so that's actually what I applied to all four towns for, because I thought that might appeal specifically to the cultural council because humanities is one of the things that's funded through that. And then, we also did a, again, a smaller-sized Northern Bank application, Middlesex Bank application. And then, there's, we had a meeting with a gentleman that owns a business in Marlboro that graduated from Hudson High School. He used to work for Moderna, so actually Mark Vidal is the one who found him. He came in, he met with us. He was wonderful and dynamic and super interested in actually helping AMSA out, but also just, he's pretty, he's, he, actually, I think, Maura, you know him, he's on the board at the Boys and Girls Club. His name's Andrew Wine, and he was just really wonderful and talked to us for a long time. And then, he actually met with Mary Jo and myself last week, and we went over some business prospects with him. He sits on the RF Wood Foundation, which is a tiny little foundation in Hudson. They fund mostly for recreation fees, so like for students that cannot necessarily afford to play sports if they don't have some help. RF Wood does that. He encouraged me to throw an application in for RF Wood, which I did, and I did it centered around. So the, Leanna has given me a figure of sort of what AMSA spends per year to cover transportation activity fees, uniforms, and a couple of the other, some, some of it goes towards lunch too, I think, right, Leanna? And so I threw a petition into RF Wood for, again, modest amount of money, but just saying that some help to cover some of those activity fees and the transportation for those activities. So, you know, it's nice to have an internal cheerleader, but, you know, again, don't really know much about that organization. So, you know, it'd be great if we got funded in year one, but it might be the type of thing where we have to sort of let them know who we are a little bit more. And then, two other things. So the 20th Anniversary Planning Committee, we had our kickoff meeting last week. It was awesome. We have, so Mike Naraki, Amanda Sensi, Pete Jones, Mike Finkel, myself, and then we have two parents, Sarah Hooper and Danielle Ryberg are our parents on it. So we had a great, oh, sorry, and we have a faculty member, Matt Anderson. So we had a great conversation, went over, you know, all the ideas that we have, tried to harness some of those. So the goal is to plan something every month, maybe a couple of things, some months. We are really hoping that we're able to kick off in January with the opening of the new building and, you know, just some rebranding, some marketing around like the logo and stuff like that, but we have a lot of ideas. I, at any time, would love to hear from anyone in this group with your ideas. Certainly feel free to share them, send them directly to me. Absolutely, you can come, attend a meeting if you want to. You know, we, we really want as much community participation as possible. We absolutely are getting alumni involved in that. I actually just reached out to Maddie Bedard two days ago just to make sure. She knows that she could have an alumni representative on this committee if somebody has time, or they could also do the same thing, just share a lot of ideas with us, and we can move forward with that. And then the last thing is just that November is giving Tuesday month, and so that will be our sort of annual fund push, if you will, for November. So we'll get that going. I'll start working with Mike on the messaging around that in the next week or so.
Awesome, thank you, Marcy. Any questions for Marcy? That is a lot. It's good.
I spoke really, really fast, so I'm sorry.
No, don't apologize. It's all great. It's all great. All right, moving on, Greg, faculty representative update.
Well, in stark contrast to Marcy, I don't have much. So I only got around two responses to my survey this week. None of them, I think, are sort of board stuff. I think it's a lot more sort of Lisa and admin stuff. I hate to come to like the second board meeting in a row and say smooth sailing, but smooth sailing, board-wise. I expect I'll have more to say in the education committee update, because we're going to be talking about sort of some survey responses, results from way back when, before the summer, but as far as faculty rep update goes, not much.
All right, awesome. I'm gonna quote Dwayne and say, no news is good news. Dwayne, speaking of, parent report?
Yes, so no update for me. I didn't get, like it said at the beginning of the meeting, no emails this, this month, so that's good. So I'll, I'll reach out to the PTO to see if anything's happening and then get a, get a comprehensive update from them next, for next time.
Awesome. I'll just throw in, at the moment, I know for all parents of seniors, and Dwayne, I know you can attest to this, there's just a ton of emails, and Darren, you too, like floating around of things that are due. So parents, if you haven't heard or seen, I know that yearbooks, the ads, if you want to put an ad or recognition in the yearbook, that's coming up in the first couple of weeks of November, so just check your email. Make sure you're not missing any of that stuff, because there's a lot.
Yeah, along with applications, yeah.
Yeah.
Fun, fun.
Yeah, it's good times, good times. Okay, Lisa, executive director report, you're up.
Okay, so I am going to share my screen, because we figured out how to do this.
Yay.
I think you can all see it. We're going to the slideshow. And then, just before I start with the formal ED report, I wanted to say that we had our first potluck dinner on October 17. Personally thought it was a huge, huge, huge success. We had 22 families sign up, around 70 people come, several faculty members. I want to thank, you know, any of the faculty members that did come. It meant a lot. Christine was there from the board and as the board and as a parent. People seemed to really enjoy the night. I mean, we just, we just shared some time together. I went table to table. I, I think I talked to every family. Mike Naraki was there. It was a great event. It felt really good, so hopefully it gains some traction and we continue to grow that, because it was really wonderful. All right, we're gonna take a quick peek at MCAS scores, AP scores. I have a special thank you that I want to throw out there, and then just some housekeeping that we typically do. I wanted to share what our demographics have looked like over the past three years, because I think that it's interesting. And we certainly can see a little increasing in diversity in the population at AMSA, which is a wonderful thing. So you can see the yellow is 2024 and blue is 2022. So our population of African-American students is slightly increasing. Our Hispanic population is increasing. And for the multirace, non-Hispanic population is also increasing. So it's great that AMSA, you know, is trying to look more like it's sending districts and means that we're doing decent work with outreach and recruitment. And Linda Edwards is a star, and I know that she's got even more things planned for this year. Right, so selected populations as a percent of the school. This also because charters often get criticized about taking, you know, the best students. I think it's important for us to show that, you know, our English language learner population is increasing. It's more than doubled the, from the year before. We can see low income. Students with disabilities is holding steady. And overall, our high-needs population is up a bit. So this is just AMSA's mission. I wanted to throw it out there, because in light of the changing population, it's important for us to keep this at the forefront of our thoughts. So what you're looking at now is math in particular, and is the percent of students meeting and exceeding expectations. As I grab a clock drop, I'll give you a few minutes to kind of digest that. What we see here is that AMSA continues to do a great job getting more students into the meeting and needing, meeting and exceeding expectations category. Our sixth graders, we only have them for maybe three quarters of a year before we take the test, so we're close to the state. But as you can see, by 10th grade, we, we almost double the state in that category. Sixth grade math, percent of students by level. I decided to present it this way, because I just showed you the demographics and the changing population at AMSA. And as that population changes, you can see where, like, the bulk of our scores are falling. And, you know, where, where we're seeing some kids that we didn't necessarily see before. Back in 2021, you can see, you know, we definitely had more students in the exceeding category than now, but we're higher this year than last year. Sixth grade is tough, because again, we only have the kids for three quarters of a year. Seventh grade math, this is where you can really see that changing population and the impact it is having. I can tell you that the math department is also exceptional. They look at these scores, they focus on those students not meeting. And you can see that number going down as we go into eighth grade and then further into 10th grade. This is something that AMSA should really be proud of and the hard work that the staff does to get the kids, you know, into the categories where they're successful and they meet graduation requirements. So, the, the question that's on the ballot regarding MCAS deals with this grade level, just for some information. So as far as AMSA goes, the only students that that question would affect are the two students in the category not meeting. Students that fall in the partially-meeting category are eligible. not meeting. Students that fall in the partially meeting category are eligible for what's called an EPP or an educational proficiency plan. And what that is, is if a student takes four years of math and passes the class and the final, that is a different measure for them to attain graduation. So there's a little bit of false information out there that the MCAS is the only way to attain graduation. That's incorrect. Students can attain graduation by bumping themselves into the partially meeting category and completing their EPP plan by their senior year. And that's for math and English. Science, there, it's a, it's a little bit of a lower score to get into the meeting category and, but, but they have to get into meeting. They don't, they have to move beyond partially meeting. Here's our situation in English. And again, I think in this situation where you can see how close AMSA is to the overall state, a lot of that has to do with the students coming in, particularly our L population. But again, by 10th grade, those students are soaring compared to the state overall. I won't spend too much time on sixth grade here, but seventh grade, this is where we're landing. Eighth grade. And again, 10th grade. So as you can see, by 10th grade, students that are in that not meeting category are almost nonexistent. I would say that there's some work, I went back to eighth grade, to be done with eighth grade because we did have a higher percentage of kids not meeting in 2024 here. Mike works really closely with the department chairs, has had discussion around all of this and they're excellent to work with. Okay, so this is science. In science, our students are tested in grade eight and 10. And again, AMSA is outperforming the state in grades overall for the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations. So these kiddos in grade eight, you can see 39 partially meeting and six not meeting. Those students have to get to meeting or exceeding by 10th grade. And here is where we are. 2024. There was one student who had to retest. I'm sorry, there's 25 students who had to retest. AP scores. I don't know if you've heard, we probably haven't bragged enough, but AMSA has been awarded platinum recognition for our 2024 AP scores. We also received an access award, which I think is equally important to, to us because our mission is just that. Access and excellence for all students. So we were recognized for the number of students who participate in our AP program. And here is your five year trend. I'm gonna go back and I'll take any questions on the scores. Or discussion. All right, hearing none. Here's my special thank you to our mayor and the Marlboro DPW. I think I mentioned at the last board meeting that the safe school zone had been approved by the state for AMSA back in, I think, 2011. And I had emailed the mayor to try to get Marlboro to really put the signage up and establish it. Well, unbeknownst to me, AMSA had agreed that they would be responsible for the signage. There's a letter that was sent to me. I wanted the city council people and I wrote to the mayor and I said, we apologize. You know, the letter just came to light. If there's anything that AMSA needs to do to support the safe school zone, please let me know. About a day or two later, I was coming into work and there's the Marlboro DPW putting up all the signs and establishing the safe school zone. So I think it's really important for our kids and our families. It makes us, you know, really part of Marlboro and the, and the school system. And I'm just, I'm very, very thankful to him and his DPW and also all of the city council people that supported us. Housekeeping. Okay, so our new main building is powered up. Really, really excited about that. And so everything continues to be on track and move forward with that. College partner partnerships. I reported last time that we signed the MOU with Assumption University regarding admission, undergraduate admission and some graduate programs for our faculty if they're interested. I met with Middlesex Community College several times and they've committed to working with AMSA for an early college partnership. I'm right now trying to work with the union to try to move that forward and hopefully we have some dialogue soon around it. It could be a very beneficial program, not only for our kiddos to earn college credit for the classes that they take at AMSA, but also as a teacher, you're starting to build a partnership with MCC and you may decide to teach for them on the side or something like that. So I, again, I'm hoping that that conversation happens soon so that we could try to launch it for this year, but our window, our window is closing quickly on that. Regarding the expansion application, we definitely need everyone's support. There's a lot of misinformation about charter enrollment and funding circulating to stifle our expansion. I did meet with Maureen Sullivan last week, the end of last week, to kind of correct some of the misinformation that was recently put out in an article. Hoping, and I'm gonna share some information with you. So this slide here shows you the school choice summary. So Marlboro does not accept school choice students, but the other sending districts to AMSA do. You can see that Clinton took 65 students, Hudson took 187, and Maynard took 18 students in school choice. School choice is when students from other districts choice into the district. So there are 187 non resident students in Hudson, 65 in Clinton and 18 in Maynard. I think that this is important because we need to recognize that where a child goes to school is a best fit situation. When we have students that leave AMSA for Asabad or the place that they go in 11th grade, escaping me right now, we have to understand that and support our students for best fit. And AMSA is the best fit for some students. So just a little data on school choice and what the receiving tuition for those districts is for school choice. And I shared these slides with Maureen. This is a summary of historical Commonwealth charter school tuition and number of students that attended. So you can see in FY24, we had 78 from Clinton, 208 from Hudson, 536 from Marlboro, 77 from Maynard. It will not add up to your total 966 because we do have some other towns, but I just collected data on these towns. The other thing that's really important is the line that says transition and other reimbursement. Because sending districts do not pay 100% of the charter until year four. So all those sixth graders that came in from Hudson last year, Hudson was reimbursed 100% for those sixth graders. When those sixth graders become seventh graders, they are reimbursed 60%. When they become eighth graders, they're reimbursed 40%. And then once they become ninth graders, there's no reimbursement to the sending district. So as Board of Trustees members, I'm asking you all to send a quick email to this address, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and support our expansion. You did so by voting for the expansion, but I think the emails will help us because it can be a little contentious at this time when we're applying for an expansion. Tell your friends, tell your friends' friends. The more emails that the, or that Gessie gets, the better that the situation will be for AMSA when they make the decision. They told me that they will make the decision in February when they decide on our renewal. And that.
Can we, I have a question.
Absolutely.
So can we have another, like, I know you met last week, is there a possible way to do another article on our expansion and focus on some of this?
And that's what I'm hoping. So she interviewed me for what I'm assuming is an article.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it yet. I haven't heard about it yet. But she was, that's what the interview was for.
Okay.
My guess is it should come out tomorrow.
Okay, great. Hopefully.
Their next publication date, so hopefully.
Okay.
And Lisa, do you have quick talking points sort of for that email? And do you have a sense of what the, what, what will be wanted to be heard in an email like that?
Yeah, you know, I think that they just want to hear that you support AMSA's education, you know, as, and if you can speak, those of you that are parents, if you can speak not only as a board member, but as a parent, like what AMSA has done for your particular child, I think that that's really, really important. Would love to see some of the staff do it, you know, why teach at AMSA? Why is this important to AMSA? Our MCAS scores should speak for themselves, but they don't, scores don't always speak for themselves. You know, we have a really, really wonderful community here. Kids, kids that choose to come to AMSA, they appear to be thriving to me. And, and, you know, our staff is amazing and should be very proud of all of the work they do. So anything like that, any special experiences, whether it's, you know, an experience that your child had in a class, on a sports team, or just something that they did, or even a challenge that they went through and how they were supported through that, anything. Yep.
Thank you.
Is this something that we should also send out to the alumni network?
Yes, we did. So when Marcy and I met with, well, let me, let me rephrase that because I'm assuming you didn't get it, Greg. So I'm thinking it didn't go out to you guys yet. When we met with Maddie Bedard, we asked her to send it out to every email that she has. We will follow up because I'm assuming you didn't see that, anything like that yet.
I have not. And I was just rapidly texting a screenshot to my fiancee, who is an alum, and I was like, now, wait a second.
Yeah, fantastic. I will, I will, I will make, like, reach out and see if either we can get her email list or she will send it out.
Lisa, the draft email that we had had to share with officials?
Yeah.
Do we, is that something we could share with the board that might help with? Anything we can find?
I can find that absolutely with talking points. Yep.
That would be great. And that way we can add our own personal.
Sure.
Touches, that'd be great. Is there anything else, Lisa?
I don't have anything else tonight. No.
Awesome. Any questions? All right, great. For Chair Business, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of sending that email. So really driving that point home. And, you know, if anybody has questions or if you want to share kind of what you're sending, anything, you know, feel free to send it my way. One other thing I wanted to talk about was our board schedule, because I know we're getting into sort of, I mean, we're already in a season, but it doesn't stop, it doesn't let up. So I wanted to just review the dates for board meetings that are on the calendar. And then if there are any dates that people know off the top of their head, they would not be able to make in person, including the tentative date for the strategic planning session, let's kind of go through those now. You can feel free to take the dates down, check, email me, text me. But they are November 21st, January 9th, February 27th, March 27th, May 1st and June 5th. And the hold on the calendar for the strategic planning day is January 25th. And I know that sometimes can be a hard time. So I figured, let's deal with the calendar first and then we'll set our in-person and virtual meetings. So that we can all, I personally like in person, but I understand everyone has different schedules and travel schedules. So we'll try and keep it as flexible as possible to make sure we have the best attendance we can have. All right, committee reports, development. Evan?
Before we get into the committee reports, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, of course.
So I, I heard you saying, and I agree with you, that in-person meetings are great, but that doesn't always work for everybody. Do, do we think? And I'm assuming that we started doing virtual in the COVID times.
Yep.
And I just wonder, you know, the technology isn't going away. Is is there any appetite for talking about making all of the meetings in person and then supporting people who need to attend remotely if that's their circumstance?
Well, and I can speak to that just real quickly because we just did a full review of policies and government. In, in our policies, prior to the governor's order on allowing virtual meetings during the COVID pandemic, which has not been rescinded and she keeps kind of, and Sarah probably has the dates for the last time she kind of re-upped it. We had to have a certain number of people in person when we had an in-person meeting and then we had a call-in option. So we could definitely adjust our policies and that's something we can talk about in governance and bring to the board. But that's where that kind of initially came from. When we got the okay from the state to do all virtual, that's when we kind of went all virtual during the pandemic.
So let me ask what Darren basically just asked. Would anybody be opposed to having the standard be in person? With a call-in option? Evan, that's a, you like that or it's a, you oppose? You like that?
I like that. That is a good thing. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so if it requires a policy adjustment, Sheila, maybe it gets put on the November agenda for governance?
Yep, our policies are already on the agenda, so I'll just flag that one in particular. And then we can bring it to you guys at the November meeting.
Which is.
Can you explain to me, Mara, what, what it is exactly that you are proposing here? It's unclear.
Sorry, that board meetings would, the standard would be that they would all be in person? With a call-in option? For those who are unable to attend? And then I guess the, the finer details, if there's any minimum requirements or that kind of thing would be discussed in governance at the November meeting. And then a final recommendation put into the policies and brought to the full board in January, November, the end of November. And obviously we can talk about if there's any concerns or anything like that, they can be brought to governance or the full board, or both.
Mara, my only concern is around like the January, February time. Like, I think those are probably good standard ones to have virtual so that we know that we get them in and we so that we know that we get them in and we have them, and we're not dealing with weather. So that's my only, that's only the thoughts off the top of my head are, you know, January, February.
That's a good point. Is that something where, so when we post, we have to post 48 hours before? And weather is rather unpredictable. All right, I think that's something then to bring up.
Just to think about, and yeah.
Yep.
And I can take a peek at that too, just from the OML kind of lens and see what we might be able to do with that, you know?
That'd be great, yeah. If there's like a provision for canceling or shifting at the last minute, if there's a blizzard.
Well, if your, if your window's 48 hours, I mean, you're going to generally know whether or not you're at risk.
There's a storm coming, yeah.
And, you know, the chair and the executive director could make a call 72 hours in advance and say, okay, we'll do it virtually. We'll send the invites out virtually just to hedge our bets if there's a, you know, bad weather on the way. If not, schedule for in-person, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, you know, sometimes it's not even a storm coming, right? But they're just, roads are damp, roads are wet. I know Sarah and I live a little further away. So those are the two months that just concern me with saying, you know, all in-person.
I get that. Good point.
And that's something we can look at in terms of, you know, Lisa, when we're in governance too. Just do we want to kind of hybrid that and have that distinction? So as long as it's allowable under the directives from the state, we're good. But we can talk about that.
Okay, so, any other comments, questions, thoughts? All right, great. Onto committee reports, development, Evan?
Hello. Our, we, excuse me, wow. The Development Committee met last month, this month, and we were a little bit light on committee members due to some scheduling conflicts. So we're, Marcy and I are, we're looking into how we can recruit some additional members as well as get a defined schedule going forward in the future. So that's something that we're going to get standardized, and hopefully we can get all our dates into Board on Track soon. Excited for that. We did a little bit of review of what we're looking for in terms of policies that we want to get solidified within the Development Committee. So expectations around donations, gifts, appropriate behaviors from both sides of those interactions. We're, we're going to be reviewing those at our next session next month to have a joint review. After that, Marcy shared an overview of our, excuse me, of the development plan, which I believe she'll be showing at the November board meeting. So we'll all have our eyes on. So up until then, we're getting feedback from our committee members so we can give everybody an up-to-date view on what we're looking at. And I believe Marcy already touched on most of the other items in regards to the 20th anniversary and the capital campaign updates. But other than that, that was the gist of our meeting.
Excellent, thank you, Evan. Any questions for Evan? Evan, is there a date for the next one or is that?
Marcy and I are chatting right now about that.
And next is finance, Bella?
So we met this week, and the bulk of our meeting was really a presentation from the auditors and, and the Finance Committee asking questions and just a really healthy discussion on our financial statements where we voted to approve them. And then we also did, we had a, we had a lengthy agenda. So we also reviewed a few of our policies that are in place and realized some of them need to be updated, especially our cash dispersment policy. And Leanna has already had recognized that, and she's going to be kind of taking a first pass. And so that is our plan, is to just review all the existing policy that we have in place. And just, so we'll do another one next month and just see, like, do we need to update it? You know, is this relevant anymore, et cetera? And then the final thing we talked about were, we had, we got a quote for our, for the electric buses and for, I guess, you know, your traditional gas, gas buses. And unfortunately, the, the electric buses, the cost is just astronomical. And we did receive a grant, but the grant, even using the grant, the costs are just astronomical. And it just doesn't make sense. So we've probably put that on hold. And as far as buses in general, you know, that, that is still in the plan, and I guess more to come. That's it. That's all. That's, that was our meeting.
Thanks, Bella. Any questions, Bella?
This is a minor curiosity, but when you say the cost of the electric buses is astronomical, how bad are we talking?
Yeah, I, so two buses were 600,000, and we got a 300,000 grant. And, and I don't even know if that includes the charging stations. And on top of that, yeah, and on top of that, the radius for driving was like 60 miles. And on top of that, you, you can't just charge these buses on the normal, normal chargers you see, you know, where you can use your Tesla. It's like, so it just didn't seem practical.
And the last on top of that is you can't buy one with the 300,000 that they're giving you. You have to buy two with the 300,000 that they're giving you.
Oh, and one more on top. You have to give, you have to give back your, your other buses that are run on gas. So there was just a lot of things that didn't make sense for us.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, who's the manufacturer of said buses?
That's a good question. I don't remember the name on the.
They were all about the same, Evan. We, we had, we get quotes from quite a few different companies, yeah.
Yeah, batteries are expensive.
Wow. Okay. Next up is governance.
Hello. So governance met, as I said, this month, one of our things was, I've kind of been trying to do a deep dive into our policies and bylaws just to see if there need to be modifications. So we've chatted about that. I did pull together kind of an overview of all of those that we, I sent to Maura, and, you know, we'll probably go through on a future board meeting just to make sure everyone that's on the board really knows what our policies and bylaws obligate us to, kind of a quick hit version of that, so that you don't have to do the reading and research that I did. So that's been our focus. Lisa has also been working, which is, again, an obligation. She's not going anywhere, but we are obligated to have an ED succession plan. So that's another topic that she's been working on and presenting to us as well. The last thing I would say is much like a previous chair said, we could always use new members on governance. And I just want to highlight for everyone, like, you do not need to be a trustee to be on a committee. So if you know someone that might want to be involved and not have the full trustee experience, but be involved in a committee, you know, please encourage them. I specifically would make the sell for governance, but I, that goes for all our committees. So just putting that out there as well.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for Sheila? Seeing none, thank you. And education, Christine?
Sure, so we met at the end of September, which means we are due to meet again. We're meeting Monday, and we do have the rest of our meetings for the year, excuse me, in Board on Track. It's one of the things we took care of last, last time we met. And just a quick refresher, so when we last met in-person in June for the annual meeting, we had talked about the sort of themes that had come out of the faculty survey, sort of a roll-up of, of kind of big picture themes. And we never did end up presenting the actual sort of survey data that was tabled for the summer. And so we have a couple of things, Greg's going to quickly walk through it. He's got access to Panorama, so he can kind of show on a, on a high level, but not as high as what we talked about last time, some of the, the outcomes. And then we have a couple of suggestions that we'll talk about where it's relevant to the board. Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, so just to sort of briefly summarize the results, because I know we, we looked at some of them, but it's also been a few months. I tried to give a, a kind of synthesis, you know, so we don't need to go through all of the numbers. So I kind of sorted things into bright spots, things that were neither here nor there, and then not-so-bright spots. So the bright spots were that the school continues to do really well. And this is faculty survey responses, just to be clear. The school continues to do really well on things about workload and about relationships between teachers and between students and teachers, and also about satisfaction with departments. Everyone pretty much said that they were, that their department gave them the space to innovate, that they were happy with that. Some other bright spots are that we are doing better on facilities and also on students with special needs. So our scores in those places actually went up. Things that were kind of neither here nor there were questions about student achievement and about other student needs. So we also asked about, like, needs for advanced students and needs for disengaged students. And responses there were not as negative as some of the other responses, but we don't have trend lines for these as well because we changed the wording. But again, neither here nor there. The sort of concerning spots, the not-so-bright spots were that morale was low, just kind of across the board, that teachers saw the administration and particularly the board as being alienated from their concerns and their needs. Teachers flagged that consistency of enforcement of rules and policies was a pretty big concern, and I know that's historically been the case. And then, last but not least, there was a big uptick in people who said that AMSA is not heading in the right direction. And I think that's, if I remember correctly, that's one that got a lot of people's negative attention when we talked about this originally. So tho, those were the results. Some kind of overall remarks that we talked about in the committee is that the survey is a snapshot of a particular time, right? It was spring of last year, and we were in the middle of a pretty lengthy negotiation session for the teacher contract. So it's kind of hard without having next year's survey data to see like, oh, this was transient or, oh, we've done things to improve this. Like, we're not going to get those answers until April or May. So that's something to keep in mind when looking at the data. Another thing to keep in mind is that we have made progress on at least a few of the things that were flagged as concerns. So, right, we have a new dean. We have an HVAC system in the upper school that has just been sort of refurbished, maybe is the word. Someone can probably find a better word. New HVAC systems have been installed in the upper school over the past month. Teacher retention over the summer was quite good, actually. After expecting that it might not be good, I think it was only three was the number of teachers who did not return. That's historically quite good. So there are concrete signs that we, you know, that some things are going well. One last thing to keep in mind before I get into recommendations is that the decisions we take here, and I think I've said this last board meeting or some board meeting over the summer, the decisions we take here can just take time to filter down, right? Budgetary decisions especially, it's kind of like, yes, this will really show up after the next contract negotiation, which is going to be in 2027. So some things can just take a really a while to filter down to the point that they're felt by the staff. With all that in mind, I, Christine and I came up with sort of three places we felt like the board could do something specifically because I think it's also important to keep the focus in production places where you can actually make a difference. The first one shouldn't be news to anyone because we've been talking about it, I feel like a bunch, but this is making board presence more felt at school events. I'm not going to spend too much time on it because we talked about it so much. Just things I would like to emphasize in that is we want specific structured time. So, you know, either sort of those roundtables that we've talked about or something where the, the structure of the event gives an opportunity for staff to reach out to board members rather than just board members being present, which is also good. But I think the structure will give us more bang for our buck.
And Greg, if you don't mind, just interrupt there, that, that's something that specifically came out of our last education committee meeting was the BOP Day, which I am not, have not participated in, but it sounds like that was something that happened after April break, pre-COVID, I guess, where the board would kind of, it sounds like Sarah, you had, it was a lot of work for you, but that you put together schedules and the board was sort of just around for the day. So that was something that came out of our last meeting, some interest in maybe reawakening that. So just to mention that specifically.
So that was recommendation number one. Recommendation number two was to address the, the administration/teacher consistency. And I think this is something both for the education committee and also to tell the whole board about. I wish Mike were here, so I could, we could bounce this off him. He was at the education committee meeting. But we know that this has been on the radar for a while. So we know that it's been a longstanding issue of people feeling that there was inconsistency in policies. So I think this is a place where we really do need follow-up data because I think our action would depend quite a lot on whether or not, you know, oh, every teacher has a sort of specific issue that they're like, why is this not consistent? Or if there are common issues where it's like, yeah, 70% of the staff want to see more enforcement of uniforms or more, you know, X, Y, or Z. I think the response depends quite a bit on that. So I think what the board can do is not necessarily sort of a setting policies role, but more of a fact-finding and information gathering role to assist the administration, right? Lisa and Mike, who I think would ultimately be the ones who took action on this. And then a last recommendation that we have, this is to address the comments about overall direction of AMSA. And I think this is the most sort of amorphous one. It's the, definitely the hardest one to address, but it's also kind of the most important one because, you know, if teachers feel like AMSA is not going the right way, that is a pretty bad sign. So it, it's hard to come up with a recommendation here because of how amorphous it is. And I think we should point out that some things are objectively improving. Like, the new building is being built. That is an objective fact. And that is something that's happening that I think can only really be a positive. Speaking from my experience as faculty rep, the most common manifestations that I hear of this is people saying one of two things. It's that AMSA is not how it used to be, or AMSA is turning into a public school, which I think are just about as amorphous as going the wrong way. But the way that I interpret them is there are questions that we, as the board, should be focused on that I could think, that I think could help assuage those concerns. One is how are we differentiating ourselves specifically from public schools in the area? I think there was a lot of discussion when Lisa was hired and also during her first year of like the secret sauce, to use the phrase that everyone loves. I think that is very worthy of discussion. Something that I think is also worthy is, like, it's not just a static thing, right? The regulatory landscape changes, our sort of funding mix changes, new policies are being made by DEES or by the, you know, Federal Department of Education. And so how we react to those new policies can be just as important as continuing to cultivate the institutional knowledge that we already have and doing things sort of the ways that we have found work. So I think the board could sort of focus on, you know, how do we, how do we react to changes in education policy? How do we react to new circumstances? This happened just this year in my department, in the computer science department, because new regulations were passed talking about what softwares we could use and how they have to handle student privacy. And we had to throw out a lot of softwares that we were using because they would not sign waivers. So I think how we react to those situations is important and are worth talking about in, sort of as a board. All right, I know that was a lot of words, but does anyone have any questions? I'm also happy, I'm sort of glancing back and forth at a document. I'm happy to hand out that document if people would like to see my thoughts in a more organized fashion.
I have a question. How, how do you think we could go about, like, fact-finding on, like, this policy consistency? Like, what should we do, like, as a board? Like, how do we get, what policies, like, you know, how do we get this data?
Yeah, I mean, I think that might be an adjustment we should, we could make or ask about in the, this year's iteration of the survey. I think we could also conduct a focus group maybe on, during one of those events that, where we have structured time for the boards to talk to teachers. That could be one of the specific questions that we ask.
Right.
Because this keeps coming up. I mean, you know, I'm only one teacher, and I'm sure people would say different things than me. I think that's one way.
Yeah.
And Greg, and you and I talked about, maybe instead of a, a general, hey, folks, it's time for the board meeting. Does anybody have anything for the faculty? hey folks, it's time for the board meeting. Does anybody have anything for the faculty rep report? Being more pointed in your questioning so that we can gather some of this information. I, I, I agree with Greg on all of this. I do think that some of the negativity or the, some of the displeasure. We've really worked on a lot of that, right? So we've really worked on upgrading the facility so that teachers and students and staff are, are comfortable. So the HVAC and, and things like that. We, you know, we did, we made a shift in administration this year and you know, Greg and I have talked about it and it seems to be, you know, going in the right direction with, you know, improving consistency and, and policy thing. I think sometimes I, you know, I have made an effort to be at the staff meetings so far and plan on continuing that to get some messaging out more directly face to face. Which, you know, I gave Mike that a chance to do all of that last year because I think that he needed to grow in his role and be able to be head of school and, and you know, really do that role. But sometimes things, as Greg said, it changes with DEES or with some sort of regulation. And where charter schools used to have an amazing amount of autonomy, they don't have the autonomy that they used to have. And we have to kind of live in both worlds now, rather than the autonomous charter world and then your district public school. And I think that's hard for our faculty. We recently had to implement using a model to check for bias in our curriculum materials. Well, AMSA's never been called out on that before, but we were called out during the tiered focus monitoring on that. So we have to correct that. We have to fix that. And, you know, I explained it to the faculty. They knew where I stood on it versus like, there's what we have to do. And then there's sometimes what, what Lisa thinks about things. You know, and I shared that with them. Sorry. Sheila's got her cat and I have Bella in the background. So, you know, I think maybe some of the faculty, you know, when you put it out there, just being more pointed so we can gather data. I love the idea of having like the board of trustees day. I also like the idea of having focus groups. I, I do think that we can improve some of that, but I think we've made some good progress. She's annoying.
Yeah. And I, I would definitely like, I think it is significant that in the results of a survey that were overall more negative in the past, that the places where we improved despite that overall negative current were exactly the places that Lisa mentioned. I think that is very encouraging. If you take one encouraging thing out of this survey result. So I like, I think these are fixable problems and I think our focus would be, we would do well to put our focus to some of the things that I mentioned for sure.
May I say something? I just wanted to add, Christine said about the trustees day that actually was put on by Liz Saul, who was the education committee chair for many years and a board member. She was great and she did all of that. And I think Mike helped her and maybe Lynn McCluskey, they were all into that. I don't think I had anything to do with it, but I'd be very happy.
Your reputation precedes you as a magic maker.
Let me tell you, I would be happy, since she is not here, I'd be very happy to help you put that on because I think it was a really successful event.
Great.
Very helpful.
That seemed to be the, the sense I got.
Yes, it was wonderful.
I can talk.
Yes.
That created more work for us. Just doing my job. Thank you, Sarah. That's great.
And I think when I do the faculty drop-ins, I can send the board an invitation. And if any of you are free and could come, and I'll plan on ahead of time. So maybe Christine, you could then add them to your, your sheet for people to sign up. We can, we can definitely do that.
Perfect. Great.
Awesome.
That's all we had then.
Oh, sorry. No, go ahead, Christine.
I was just going to say that was it, but premature.
Greg, one question. You had mentioned for number three, your third recommendation, you had mentioned it could be broken down into two questions. And I was able to capture, how are we differentiating ourselves? Did I miss the second question? Or was it just, was that the sort of the main thought?
Um, it was kind of how do we differentiate ourselves? And how do we, the second question, I, I guess related is how do we do that continuously? Right? So how do we sort of not just say this is how we're different, but this is how we will continue to be different. This is how structurally we react differently to policy changes.
Awesome. Thanks. Any other questions for Christine or Greg? Awesome. Reviewing action items, we don't have anything carried over that hasn't been resolved that I'm aware of. But I would like to actually add those questions that Greg brought up to sort of our homework for our action items. So I think the board presence thing is already in motion. So that's good. Be trying to find out and do a little bit of research on the issues with consistency. I think we can do a little bit of that digging and outreach at the moments in the events where we're present. But I would like for everyone to sort of think about, how are we differentiating ourselves? And how does that become continuous? Right? Let's let's think about it so that we can just bring it up at this point in the agenda next month. Because I think keeping these things top of mind and keeping them on the agenda is going to help us as we review our documents and and look through things to really keep it top of mind, leading into our strategic plan in January. Our, our planning day in January. I don't want to, I don't want to table it for that long, so I'd rather keep it on the agenda and keep it top of mind.
Something that, sorry, go ahead.
Well, mine's just kind of housekeeping. Last time we had talked about, I had put together that very basic signup sheet and we talked about making it better and putting it on the board of trust, or Board on Track. So I'm just wondering like, where did that go? And have we not followed through and for signing up so that, for the board presence, you know, piece of it.
I have not put it on Board on Track. So I will own that one. That makes, gets on board.
Adding new events or new like opportunities to it.
What was that Christine?
I'm wondering who owns sort of keeping it updated.
At the moment, we have to Google, I mean, it's, it's in a Google format right now. So that we can all contribute.
Okay, okay. So no one is going through and making sure that everything's added.
Yeah. And then what I will do is I will, when I meet with Lisa, Lisa and I meet every other week. So I'll make sure that I get any new items and put them on.
Perfect, perfectly. Thank you. That's what I was asking. So then if I can help with that, it feels like it might straddle a little bit into for me. So I'm happy to, if that's not more work, just tell me.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
And if you share it with me, Maura, I can add events into it.
Okay, great.
Are those being curated from a larger list? I mean, I guess my question is someone, someone is, is exercising some discretion over what ends up on the signup list? Or is it just like a copy of something that's published somewhere?
So this, okay, so this list I started and I just threw on events that I knew that were coming up that I thought maybe would be good to have a board of trustee representative. But it, it only went through like September. So you know, this is all new to all of us. And so I don't think we really have a process in place to, to figure out like, oh, which events should we really put on the list, which events we shouldn't. I guess I would leave it up to Maura and Lisa, when you meet every two weeks. And then I think, I, I mean, if another BOT, if another trustee feels that there's an event that somebody should be on, we should all have access to be able to add that event into the list.
So the reason I was asking is, you know, and not to geek out too much about it, but if it's like a list and like, if there's an event list that's published on the website already, and that's, that was the source of you getting the items that you've added, then we could probably avoid somebody having, having to manually maintain the list of opportunities for the board to sign up for. Do you get where I'm going with that?
Yeah. No, because it's faculty, a lot of faculty stuff. It isn't like necessarily just family community stuff, right? It's like, yeah, not stuff that would just be on this, on the, the event's calendar.
And also it's dynamic, right? It's, it's constantly changing and adding and over to, so it's hard to know ahead of time what that list looks like.
Right. But if it was the whole list, the, the constantly changing wouldn't be so much of a problem.
Right.
Because you could just constantly be refreshing against a, against the list. But if it's curated, then human, human hands are going to have to touch it apparently.
Yeah.
I think it would be more curated because I think it has to have a mix of what is like currently on the events calendar, like Sarah does a plan of the week and she lists everything and we all kind of copy from her plan of the list. But then we also have this internal faculty calendar that talks about other events. And it might be nice for people to know what they are, just in case you're free, you know, like AMSA racing is racing somewhere local or, you know. So I think it's more curated.
Okay, I will get that on Board on Track and update it. And if anybody else wants to throw anything in there.
I, I think this is also, I, I think Pama J kind of was like, oh yes, I can have my department take a look at that. And I think it just kind of fell by the wayside. So I can try to rover back in tomorrow when I see her at school and be like, hey, is something going to happen with this?
Yeah, to make it a little more.
Yeah, I think there were talk of like sinking calendars or something of that nature. So.
Yeah, I think along the lines of what Darren's saying, maybe there's a way we can pull stuff in that would apply.
Yeah, exactly.
With that said, any other questions, thoughts, comments, concerns? All right. Then I will take a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss strategies regarding negotiations with represented personnel as doing so, an open session would be detrimental to the process. We will also be inviting Mike. Yeah. Lisa. And anybody else coming? Just you guys?
Leanna.
Leanna. And Leanna. Okay, great.
Motion to, yeah, second by Evan.
Who made the first motion? I'm sorry.
Karen and Evan.
Darren and Evan. Thank you. All right, I will call Bella.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Okay. Darren.
Yes.
Dwayne.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
And Sheila.
Yes.
Sarah, I'm not seeing a separate link. Do we have a separate link? Oh, I did not make a link. I always, you know what? I'm so used to one of you doing that for, for your own executive sessions. Do you need?
I'll do it really quickly. I can do it.
Leanna is going to do it. Thank you, Leanna.
Sorry. Chain reaction. All right. So we are stern and Leanna is sending, are you going to send the link by email?
Um, I can.
Does that work or?
I just got to find the last one.